Good evening, welcome to the April 11th City Council Meeting. The first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. And before we move on to the roll call of members, we have to swear in a new member. So we have Councilman Robertson step forward and we'll perform your swearing in.
Aye, Dick Robertson.
Aye, Dick Robertson.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of all of this state.
And all of local ordinances.
And all of local ordinances.
That I will faithfully, impartially.
That I will faithfully, impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
According to the law.
According to the law.
In the best of my abilities.
In the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
All right, welcome back, Dick.
Thank you.
All right, with that, on to the roll call of members.
Councilman Kincaid.
Present.
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilman Coates.
Here.
Councilman Robertson.
Here.
Councilman Copeland.
Here.
Councilman Lamar.
Here.
Councilman Fleming.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any old business coming forward for the council tonight?
(Inaudible).
Oh, approval of the minutes, that is old business, there we go. On to approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second. Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Minutes are approved. You always catch me on that one, Keith. All right, now, any old business? Nope? Okay, with that, April is Child Abuse Awareness Month, so we have Cassie Sheets from the Child Advocacy Center, and wanted to have her come up and say a few words quickly, and it explains why we're all wearing our ugly ties tonight, so. All right, and I'll read this resolution as well, too, while she's making her way up, so. Whereas Indiana's children are one of the most precious resources in our state, and provide hope for a brighter future in Indiana. Whereas child abuse prevention is a community problem, and finding solutions depends on our involvement among people throughout the community. Whereas effective child abuse prevention succeeds because of partnerships created between social services agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare organizations, law enforcement agencies, the business community, parents, and practitioners. Whereas the cultural attitude needs to change to ensure that healthy, safe, and nurturing experiences are supported by the actions of every individual in every community. Whereas all citizens need to be more aware of child abuse and neglect and its prevention within the community, and involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe, nurturing society. Whereas public awareness regarding child abuse and neglect is encouraged by Prevent Child Abuse Indiana, the villages and other organizations. Therefore, I hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and urge all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, and businesses to make positive choices and changes for children, and increase their participation in efforts to prevent the child abuse, neglect, abuse and neglect, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. All right. Cassie?
As I said, my name is Cassie Fraser, actually. I am the Director of the Boone County Child Advocacy Center. I would like to thank the council for the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight. April is National Child Abuse Awareness Month, and at the Boone County CAC, we are trying to bring an awareness to our community. On social media, you can view our local community members participating in the Tie One campaign. This campaign asks people to wear an ugly tie and take a stand that the only thing that is uglier than child abuse is society who ignores it. On April 23rd, 2015, the Boone County Child Advocacy Center, in partnership with the Boone County Prosecutor's Office, are hosting our second annual superhero 5K at the Boone County 4-H Fairgrounds. Participants, especially children, are encouraged to dress up as their favorite superhero and enjoy a day with their family and friends. The Boone County Child Advocacy Center is a nonprofit organization created in 2010 to serve Boone and Montgomery County. The mission of the Boone County Child Advocacy Center is to minimize the trauma to any child who is involved in allegations of sexual or physical, or serious physical abuse or neglect, and the subsequent investigations of those allegations. The Boone County Child Advocacy was established by a group of impassioned individuals to provide the coordination of necessary services in a child-focused and child-friendly, home-like setting for our most vulnerable citizens, our children. National statistics tell us, one in four girls and one in six boys will be sexually abused by their 18th birthday. One in five children will be solicited while on the Internet, and nationally, we will lose an average of four children per day to neglect or physical abuse. Ninety percent of the children are abused by a family member or someone they know personally, and sixty percent of abused children will never tell anyone. Two-thirds of the people in drug treatment programs report neglect or abuse. It is important as a community for social services to work together to get at the problems. As we know, each issue does not exist in its own silo, it is coexisting with other societal issues. We are working to continue our prevention efforts. Since opening our doors, we have conducted over 600 interviews of children in Boone County. And since January of 2016, we've conducted 69 interviews of children in Boone County. The goal of this field, the goal of everyone working in our field is to end child abuse. And in order to attain that goal, we need to provide our adults and children with skills to prevent child abuse. The Boone County CAC offers the following programs. Stewards of Children is a sexual abuse prevention program for adults, teaching adults how to prevent, recognize, and react responsibility to child sexual abuse. We have currently trained over 300 Boone County residents. Smart Steps, a body safety program, is a program that teaches elementary school-aged children that their bodies belong to them. It is okay to say no to unwanted touches from anyone and to tell a trusted adult. And abuse is never their fault. These messages of empowerment will affect the children for their lifetime. Currently, we have trained 2,316 Boone County children. And we are currently assessing the need for what's called a Safe Dates Training in Boone County. Safe Dates is a program that teaches teens about safe dating practices, safe technology use, drug and alcohol abuse, and suicide prevention. It takes several agencies and people working together to protect our children. This is truly a team effort, and everyone involved is a hero to these children. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight, and for helping this Boone County CAC keep children in our community safe.
Okay, next up on the agenda is Molly Whitehead, from the Boone County Economic Development Corporation. She had a, there was a Boone County labor study that was completed, and she wanted to present some of the results to the council.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor, Council. I am Molly Whitehead, and I'm the Executive Director of the Boone County Economic Development Corporation. In late 2015, we contracted with Thomas P. Miller &amp; Associates to conduct a labor and labor shed analysis for Boone County in order to help drive our efforts, understand where we currently are, and how we can improve our communities and improve in economic development. What you have before you, just wanted to provide you with some very high-level talking points and information as we continue to grow here in the county. This, if it's not already available, have provided a copy of the mayor, or a copy of it electronically to the mayor to put it on the city's website as well, so that will be available for the public. But what you'll see here, it showed about 32,000 people employed in Boone County. Our population right now, 61,000, 63,000, so roughly half, once you factor out anybody who's not working, you know, 16-year-olds, retired, so 32,000 is where we are. You'll see one statistic in here, about 6,000 people, a little less than that, live and work in Boone County, which means we are sending about 75% of the people who live in Boone County are coming, or actually, it's 80%, leaving Boone County to go to Marion County, Hamilton County, Clinton County, and we're bringing about 75% of those people back in. So we are losing a little bit of our population. This is one number I would love to see grow in the future, the more people we have living and working here, that's higher COAT, the county option income taxes coming in for you, you're getting 1%, or county, rather, is getting 1% and it's filtering down to the individual communities. We can increase that number, that's increased food and beverage, that's more property taxes being paid here, so that is a number that we would love to see grow. Plus side, 20.5% increase in our labor force in the past 10 years. So we're continuing to see that growth, but again, we just need to plan for it very wisely. One number we asked them, or a couple of numbers we asked them to pull for us, average wage in Boone County, $17.47, so that's the equivalent of $34,000 a year. Now, the caveat to this, you'll see the number right below that is median household income in Boone County is $14,000, higher than the national average. So the median household income in Boone County is actually $68,000. Median income here in Lebanon is $44,000. And so the 17.47, those are for people who live in Boone County and work in Boone County alone, so that's 6,000, or rather, I should say the people working in Boone County are making 17.47 an hour. So what that means is, we're not just looking at single-family households here for the 17.47 an hour. Knowing that the average income here in Lebanon is 44,000, we know that there are some double-income families here in the community, so that's a good number to know, but that's not all we should base our decisions off of. You'll see 33% decrease in underemployment. Underemployment means that there's an employee that, or a potential worker out there that wants to find full-time work, but can only find part-time work. One that is trained in a job that they can perform at a much higher level, but again, cannot find that position out there. So 2015, we saw a 33% decrease in underemployment, meaning we probably only have maybe 1,000 people or so who are actually considered underemployed in Boone County. Those can be people that we might want to go after, to try to advertise the available opportunities here in Boone County for them, but there's not a big number to work with there. Top industries, electronic shopping, employment services, restaurants, warehouses. Some of this information can be a little misleading. We know that some of our employers may report to where their headquarters are located, some of them may not. Some of them may be classified in slightly different ways than we might classify that. For instance, we showed top industries, doesn't pull this list here, but we know there's a large number of electric lighting manufacturers in Boone County. Kind of a question mark to me, to be honest, but we have, say, one company that falls under that category for federal employment purposes, that may only be a headquarters opportunity here, there may not be actually any manufacturing in Boone County, but because it's reported that way for federal purposes, it shows that way. So there's a little bit of data that can get a little wonky on that. The back page, just common themes that came up, we did conduct, or we had our contractors conduct surveys, phone calls, actual one-on-one meetings, we were not present, the city was not present for those, so these were completely anonymous, but coming from companies that are here in Boone County. What are some of the problems they've experienced with labor going forward? What should we be doing? Marketing popped up, what should Boone County be doing? We need to market ourselves better, we need to own it a little bit more, have pride in who we are as a community. Transportation, or lack thereof, workforce availability, so that's just the sheer numbers of people. Knowing that our unemployment and underemployment rates are so low, that's a challenge for our employers in simply finding the people to take those positions. Soft skills, and then quality of life came up. And then you'll see down here at the bottom, the next steps, what the Boone EDC will be doing on behalf of the City of Lebanon and our other municipalities here. We need to diversify the types of industries we have here. We would like to see more manufacturing, headquarters, R&amp;D positions, bring in different types of businesses that may complement those that are already here. Quality of place, so these, this is investing in quality infrastructure, in trails, this is being able to bring in more small businesses and improving the square. Those are the sort of things that do matter to people who want to live here in Boone County, live here in Lebanon, and work here as well. Post-secondary education, supply chain analysis, TPMA is actually working on that for me as a next step. That'll be more for internal use of what are the sort of companies that we should be considering, because they are fast-growing, or they're complementary of already existing industries. Transportation, again, and marketing, thank you for your support last year, there was an increase in funding from the City of Lebanon, from Boone County as well. That actually enabled us to piece together enough funding to hire a marketing employee, so we can actually start to address some of these issues the right way. With that, be happy to answer any questions about the study itself, or anything else that the Boone EDC has been involved with recently.
I have a question, Molly.
Uh-huh.
At the business part, what's the percent that is manufacturing versus?
Logistics.
Yep.
Yeah, so the Lebanon business park, roughly 50% of the businesses out there are logistics. We do have a couple that, say Festool, for example, they are logistics, but they're also their US headquarters, so we get a mix of that. Have fewer manufacturers, but they are out there, they are higher-paying positions, and those, again, are the sort of companies that we are interested in trying to bring here.
Well, I think there's a misconception that most, a lot of people believe that logistics is almost all that's out there.
No.
And then, I mean, really about half the time.
Of existing. The data that we've seen for 2016, the leads that come in our door, so those companies that are interested in Boone County, potentially interested in relocating from a different area, or they're growing so rapidly, they need a second location. Over 50% of those, they want an already-existing building, and they want an already-existing building zero to 50,000 square feet. We do not have that. We have one spec that's not yet been constructed, but that's honestly in Lebanon, we've got much larger buildings. Most of the requests that come in our door are for manufacturers, almost half of them are manufacturing companies. Logistics users, 15% maybe of the requests that come in are actually logistics companies. The other thing to understand about logistics and warehouse and companies, they don't all pay a lower wage. Vroom.com, that announced down in Whitestown late last year, they're technically logistics and distribution, but they're paying over $30 an hour in wages, so it kind of runs the gamut of what you might see.
Molly, was there a recommendation from the study of kind of one thing Lebanon should focus on?
There was.
Primarily?
The main recommendation specifically for the City of Lebanon was that the city invest in quality of life improvements. Again, the trails, the downtown area, sidewalks, amenities for residents. That came specifically from the employers that participated in the study, so that's what they would like to see, and that's what their employees would like to see, but it did specifically mention Lebanon.
So it wasn't an issue with tax rates, it wasn't an issue with that, it was the workforce and quality of life here in town?
Correct. Now, again, keep in mind, this was simply a labor study, so we're doing a secondary study, an industry study, so we may uncover some additional issues or concerns that businesses may have, and that would be more where we might see taxes, regulations, things along those lines. But here, it's, what do they need to attract the right type of workforce, so that we can start to aim for these higher-paying jobs that we all want? What do we need to do to get the people to live here, so that we can show the right sort of data to those companies?
Very cool. Any other questions from the council?
I was just a little bit curious, too, do you have like an age range of those folks that are employed here in Boone County? Have we seen an influx of millennials coming in at this point, or does it seem to be more that Generation X?
So, right now, in Boone County, the highest percentage of, say, an age range, that doesn't quite make sense, but it's looking at 10 to 19, that's where we see the most number of people in Boone County. That said, the highest growing are in the 55 and plus crowd, which means in the next 10 years, we're going to start to see some problems if we don't start to pay a little more attention to what drives the younger audience, what drives those teenagers and the 20-something-year-olds. We really, we can't forget about everybody else. Obviously, you still have to provide services and provide a desirable community that all age ranges would like to see. But again, that's where it goes back to the quality of life, that's what, you know, I kind of say to people, as I grew up here in Boone County, the only people who ever encouraged me to come back to Boone County were my parents. Right? They want to see me here.
Here in Lebanon, so.
Exactly.
That was my whole platform.
Exactly, so those, that's why. And you've got to provide something desirable as well, to make people want to come back.
Any other questions from the council? Okay. Thank you, Molly.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you presenting that. And, nevermind. Okay. If the council doesn't mind, we're going to recess for about five minutes here before we address the next issue, we're going to make sure we have everything in line here before, if that's okay, so we're going to recess for about five minutes. We're back now after the break. Due to a clerical oversight, we will be having an official public hearing at the second reading next, on the 25th. However, we will proceed with the reading of the ordinance, the staff report, and the public discussion concerning the variance, or the vacation ordinance. So with that, we'll have Derek from the Plaid Department come forward and kind of explain where we are in the situation here we have.
Good evening, and I do apologize for the clerical error there, but I think we can still work through it and get it done in the normal timeline, it sounds like. Okay, so obviously, you know what's in front of you right now is the alley and street vacation that's found in the Liberty subdivision. Before I get started with this presentation, I just want to stress that during this whole process, we have definitely found some holes that are in our vacation process, and we've, you're going to hear later tonight, after this agenda item, I believe, that how we're going to address closing those holes in this vacation process. It's kind of a separate issue, but this whole process with this particular case has brought all that to light, so that's not really a part of this presentation, but I do want to let you know that we will make an effort to clean up this vacation process for future cases. The particular request before you tonight comes from the Plan Commission with an unfavorable recommendation. The reality of the Liberty addition is, it is a 100-year-old platted subdivision, and it was actually platted in 1917. This right here is a copy of the actual recorded subdivision back in 1917. You can see Green Street is here, the 16-foot alley that runs from north to south and releases onto Indianapolis Avenue down here on the south end, and then a public alley on the very north end. So this, in 1917, the forefathers thought this is the way that subdivision was going to develop. The reality of the situation is, it did not develop that way. This is what you see here, so I can point out that the alley that you see platted on the previous page, the north side is up here, goes down this way, and comes out, was intended to come out over here. Development has changed all that. In fact, the northern side of the subdivision is the only side that developed in accordance with the way it was foreseen back in 1917. So in a sense, this is, this is a, could be considered a cleanup issue in this vacation request. Other facts uncovered point to this being vacated somewhere along the way. The mistake, and it is a fact in all of this, is that vacation, that vacation was never recorded, so that's why we're here tonight presenting this. Even with the unfavorable recommendation, staff believes that the street and alley should be considered by the council for vacation at this time. Our staff recommendation, which was presented to the Plan Commission, is as follows. In review of the vacation request for the portions of the 16-foot public alley which transverses in a north-south direction in the Liberty addition, specifically the portions of the 16-foot alley west of Lot 4, this is Lot 4, this is that alley, portions of the 16-foot alley located within platted Green Street, this is Green Street, you do not see the alley crossing Green Street, because in terms of layers, a street is over an alley, so the alley is underneath this Green Street, it's just not showing up in the survey. Portions of the alley west of Lots 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 in the Liberty addition, and the entire portion of the platted Green Street in Liberty addition. Lebanon Planning Staff recommends the City of Lebanon Lebanon Planning Staff recommends the City of Lebanon Plan Commission grant a favorable recommendation to the common council with the following conditions. Condition one, conveyance by deed. Any vacation of the subject property will be drafted in the form of deeds by the city attorney, Rob Schein. Upon conveyance of vacated areas to Brian and Lisa Richards and Ron Smith, the property will then be granted to the City of Lebanon Utilities for future drainage and utility easements in all portions vacated in this request. Condition two, drafting of a drainage and utility easement. Prior to the vacation ordinance being approved, the city attorney, Rob Schein, and the utility attorney, Jeff Jacob, will work in conjunction to prepare and record maintenance and repair agreements to be held within the entire physical limits of subject vacation areas. Condition three, platted denotations. Further, the Lebanon, or, sorry, the Liberty Edition plat will be amended with properly denotation for the newly created utility easements. Once the plat amendment has been approved, it will be recorded in perpetuity. The reason the request is moved from the Plan Commission and is before the city council is because when a city-owned piece of ground is being sought for vacation, Indiana state law requires the application to be heard by the legislative body. That's found in Indiana Code 36-7-3-12. If there was not a public-owned property in the vacation request, it would have stopped at the Plan Commission in accordance with Indiana Code 36-7-4-711. But because there are city-owned pieces of property in here, that's why it did move on to the city council. The factors of why we believe the vacation should be considered are, number one, taxes. Tax records indicate Richards have been paying taxes on the street and alley for some time. The tax records show land owned by the Milky Way is assessed on .99 acres. .99 acres is what you see in yellow, which you can see includes the alley and street. The physical measurements of the parcels, alley, and street show 43,299 square feet, or .994 acres. We were able to obtain tax payment receipts that go back to 2006 that prove payments were made in accordance with what you see in the highlighted yellow box. Number two, the southern access of the alley was already vacated in 2000 by the city council. This portion right here. Alley vacated number 00-08 to Jerry Richardson for the portions of the 16-foot public alley, which are located west of lots 11, 12, 13, and north of 14 in the Liberty Edition. The subject vacation request was undiscovered until recently due to the fact the 2008 approved vacation ordinance was not recorded in 2000. It since has been recorded, and it's why it's showing up now on the survey. The third factor is the collapse of the Naughty Pine. And this is the reason why this portion of the alley west of 7, 8, 9, and 10 and east of Lot 15 was added to the request. The City of Lebanon Planning Staff and the mayor's office had discussions with Ron Smith, who is the present owner of those lots. Upon conclusion of the discussions with Mr. Smith, the vacation request was amended to include the portion of that alley. Mr. Smith indicated that he is going to demolish the old Naughty Pine Inn and the house to the north. After demolition, the lots owned by Mr. Smith become more appealing to market if a lot combination is done and the alley is already vacated, in essence leaving a parcel more suitable for redevelopment. Another factor that has become a misconception is the need for LFD to have two means of access in case of fire. Lebanon Fire Department has indicated that if a fire were to happen in this subdivision, they would either fight it from Indianapolis Avenue, or in the case of the barn that sits on Lot 16 and 17, they would access it from existing East Green Street west of the rail corridor. You can see that here is East Green Street west of the corridor, and you can see the drive that gives access to this barn right here off of existing East Green Street. Fighting a fire in the alley could potentially put them in a collapse zone. They do not want to be in a collapse zone, and that would be in that alley. The vacation of the alley and street before you tonight has no bearing on LFD. And I have confirmed that with Chief Bats. Access will remain for the homeowners of lots 1, 2, and 3 in the Liberty Edition, including the residential lot directly north of the addition from the alley platted at the north end of the Liberty Edition and the alley west of lots 1, 2, and 3. Here is the home directly north of the Liberty subdivision. Lots 1, 2, and 3 and the barn can all be accessed from the platted alley on the northern side of this Liberty subdivision and the remaining unvacated portion of the alley that is to the west of those lots. The Richards also have indicated at the Plan Commission meeting that the lateral waterline connection for the barn found on lots 16 and 17 will be given access to the meter pit if and when maintenance is needed by way of private easement if necessary. Those are the facts, and that is why staff still recommends vacation of the street and alley. That's all I have.
Thank you, Derek. I know your staff has put in a lot of work, about three and a half months to get this all straightened down. So I appreciate your, your hard work on that.
Yes, we have. Thank you very much.
So now I would like to have Attorney Schein read the proposed resolution, or excuse me, ordinance, or ordinance. For the first reading, there will be no vote tonight. This is just a first reading. Yes?
Yes.
We will, yeah. Obviously, I have him read what the ordinance, what the ordinance says first, and then we'll go into the public comment section. Is that all right? Okay. So, and again, there will be no vote tonight on the ordinance. Those need to take up the second reading of those ordinances, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is ordinance number 2016-2. And council, you should all have received a copy of it. I have extra copies with me if anyone would like them. Okay. So this is an ordinance of the Common Council for the City of Lebanon. Vacation of Green Street within the City of Lebanon, Indiana, and portions of 16-foot public alley in said Liberty Edition subdivision. As Derek indicated, this says, whereas there has been filed with the City of Lebanon Plan Commission a petition for vacation of Green Street and portions of 16-foot platted alley, specifically the portion of the 16-foot public alley west of lots 4, portion of the 16-foot alley located within platted Green Street and lots 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 in Liberty Edition subdivision. Whereas the subject Green Street is approximately 40 feet wide by 260 feet long, it's further described by the attached legal description in Attachment A between lots 4 and 5 of Liberty Edition. In the ordinance, we define that as the Green Street vacation. Whereas notices and advertisements required by Indiana Code 367312 have been given, and a public hearing was held by the City of Lebanon Plan Commission on the 21st day of March 2016. The Plan Commission under state statute 3674711 must consider the vacation of Platts or parts of Platts. Whereas pursuant to Indiana Code 3674711, the City of Lebanon Plan Commission has voted and sent an unfavorable recommendation by 4-3 vote to the Common Council of the City of Lebanon, Indiana, for consideration and adoption of subject ordinance with the following recommendations. Now therefore, the Common Council of the City of Lebanon, Indiana ordains and enacts the following. Number one, public way vacation request is required by state statute, Indiana Code 367312. The Common Council must consider the vacation of public ways. The subject vacation ordinance is in consideration of public ways described as the Green Street vacation and portions of 16-foot platted alley. Specifically, the portion of the 16-foot public alley west of lots 4 described by the legal description in Attachment B1, the Lot B1 alley vacation. Portion of the 16-foot alley located within platted Green Streets, lots 5 and 6, described by the legal description in Attachment B2. And this is per in the Lot B2 alley vacation. Lot 7, 8, 9, and 10 is described by the legal description in Attachment C. And that's defined as the Lot C alley vacation. Lot B1 alley vacation and the Lot B2 and Lot C alley vacation are referred in this ordinance as the alley vacation in said Liberty Edition plat. Requirement number two is the establishment of a utility maintenance easement. Conveyance of portions of Green Street to the City of Lebanon from Brian and Lisa Richards. Prior to the subject vacation ordinance being effective and conditioned on the following, the property owners, Brian and Lisa Richards, will dedicate in the vacated Green Street as described in Attachment A, as well as the property described by the legal description in Attachment D, a non-exclusive drainage and utility easement in favor of and for the benefit of the City of Lebanon and all public utilities. Condition number three, conveyance of the 16-foot alleyway in entirety west of lots 4, 5, and 6 to the City of Lebanon, Brian and Lisa Richards. Brian and Lisa Richards will dedicate in the vacated portion of the 16-foot public alley west of lots 4, 5, and 6 described by the legal descriptions and attachments B1 and 2 in said Liberty subdivision, a non-exclusive draining and utility easement in favor of and for the benefit of the City of Lebanon and all public utilities. Number four, conveyance of the 16-foot alleyway in entirety west of lots 7, 8, 9, and 10 to the City of Lebanon from Ron Smith. Additionally, Ron Smith will dedicate in the vacated portion of the 16-foot alleyway west of lots 7, 8, 9, and 10 described by the legal description in Attachment C in said Liberty subdivision, a non-exclusive drainage and utility easement in favor of and for the benefit of the City of Lebanon and all public utilities. Number five, conveyance by deed to the property owners. Prior to the vacation ordinance being effective and conditioned on the receipt of the easements referenced above, the city attorney will draft and prepare in a deed form to convey the vacated portions of public ways of Green Street vacation and the alley vacation, specifically the vacated portions of Green Street described by the legal description in Attachment A. The 16-foot public alley west of lots 4 described by the legal description in Attachment B1. The portions of the 16-foot public alley west of lots 5 and 6 described by the legal description in Attachment B2 to Brian and Lisa Richards. Further, the city attorney will draft and prepare a deed form to convey the vacated portions of the 16-foot public alley found west of lots 7, 8, 9, and 10 in said Liberty Edition subdivision described by the legal description in Attachment C to Ron Smith. The UDO requirement number six is that upon receipt of the recorded maintenance access agreement, the City of Lebanon, City of Lebanon Operations Manager will sign and notarize a letter of vacation approval per Section 9.21 of the UDO. A copy of this ordinance will be transmitted and recorded to the recorder of Boone County, Indiana. The duration and the effective date, the provisions set forth in this ordinance become and will remain in full force and effect until their repeal by ordinance on the day of passage and adoption of this ordinance by signature of the executive in the manner prescribed by Indiana Code 364614.
Thank you very much, Rob. So with that, now that we've had the residents, or sorry, the ordinance read, and I know this is a, there are a lot of people here tonight that want to say their piece on this. I'd be more than happy to open this up for public testimony. Again, the official public hearing will be at the next meeting, and that's where the final vote will be taken upon second reading of the resolution. We won't read it again because Rob just read it. But we, because we will have our final vote then. But again, we will take public testimony again there as well. So if anyone wants to say anything tonight, we'd be more than happy to let you come up and say your piece. I know Mr. Witsett wanted to speak as well, too.
Thank you. My name is Tom Witsett. I'm a lawyer here in Lebanon. I think that you may not have a record of some deed conveyances, which I will refer to during my presentation to you. I looked at the packet that you have, and I'm not sure that this is included, so I'm going to pass these along. As you can see from the deeds, Lisa and Brian Richards purchased the Milky Way from Steve Shepherd, 1986. They've been in operation ever since. The deed from Shepherds to Richards include in the legal description a strip measured at right angles to Green Street now vacated but as platted, now vacated but as platted, as well as all appurtenances thereto and the underlying fee to all streets and alleys contiguous thereto. All said lots, streets and alleys being in the Liberty Edition to the City of Lebanon. The history of the conveyance of this real estate is important. The person that conveyed it to Lisa and Brian did that by warrant deed and said that this property was owned by him. And they bought it. They paid money for it. Steve Shepherd bought this property from Delmar and Roberta Stukey. And they conveyed it to him in 1982. And in 1982, when he bought it, he bought the same legal description. Green Street now vacated but as platted. In 1965, that's when Stukey's got it, from Earl and Ruth Hicks. And in 1965, the Hicks conveyed it to the Stukeys, including Green Street now vacated but as platted, as well as all appurtenances thereto and the underlying fee to all streets and alleys contiguous thereto. The representation made to you by Derek Warren, I think, is well-founded. This may have been platted over 100 years ago, but it was never developed. And property owners through the years have conveyed this property to subsequent owners. And so the reality of it is that this property has been utilized as owned by various property owners over the years. In addition to that, and we provided, after the first Plan Commission meeting, we had records with regard to the assessed value that they were paying taxes on, and that was checked out. And Derek made representations to you about the fact that the Richards have been paying taxes on this property. So they bought it, or at least they thought they did. They bought this property, and they've been paying taxes on it since then. What has been known as the Milky Way has included Green Street and contiguous alleys since 1965. There, and I wasn't here then, but I understand that when my partner, who is almost as old as I am, was a little kid, he went over there and bought ice cream from this place. It's been in existence over 50 years, and it's been at that location. And it's utilized what was platted as Green Street as a parking area ever since. Milky Way's been a family-owned business for a number of years. It is a precious, small business in Boone County and in Lebanon. It is one of those jewels that we look for in a small community. It is one of the quality of life issues that we look for in a small community. It is also a place that hires between 15 and 25 people as employees. It is a place where many high school students have gone for their first job. That's where they learn how to work. That's where they come back to work when they're, when they're older. It is a place not only for people to congregate, and as, and over the years, it has been expanded. It's a place that provides jobs for a lot of young people. If you've ever been in there, most of their staff are young kids, and many of them are working for their first time. But they learn how to work at the Milky Way. I think included in your packet is a photograph. And also behind it, there was a piece of paper which is supposed to show the date that the photograph was taken. You can hardly read it, but it's May 16 of 2002. That is an aerial photograph. The photograph that you have in your packet was duplicated, so it's not really very clear. The photograph that you have in your packet was duplicated, so it's not really very clear. But if you look at that photograph, you can see that the area which is designated as the alley, which runs along the western edge of the Milky Way, has fairly good-sized trees growing in it in two thousand and two. Those trees didn't get there overnight. They'd been there, I don't know how many years. My guess would be at least twenty in two thousand and two. Those trees since that, since two thousand and two, were cut down because the Richards wanted to expand some parking into that area, so they cut those trees, they paid for gravel to be put in, and so they started using that as a parking area. As you can see, in two thousand and two, you know, there's a, there's an east-west alley that Derek Warren pointed out on the north side of this area, the north side of these houses. That east-west alley went all the way to the railroad tracks, right through the building that's depicted in that photograph. So the building was built on top of the alley. And I assume the building was built after a building permit had been issued, which effectively blocked the continuation of that alley to the west. You can see from that photograph, though, that the main line of traffic was then rerouted and went through that built, that area back out to Green Street. That's how it was being used in two thousand and two. In nineteen eighty-three or eighty-four, the actual building of the Milky Way was extended to the east. That was done to allow some additional seating in the business location. In nineteen ninety, the building was expanded to the north. In nineteen ninety, the City of Lebanon granted a building permit. There was, and that building, if you look at the surveys, encroaches on the platted Green Street, but no issue was raised in nineteen ninety when the building was expanded. There was no objection. The city authorized the building to be expanded north into what is now Green Street, or what it was, platted originally as Green Street. Our request, and I, and I trust it, all of you on the council can review these materials before your next meeting when you actually vote. I don't really anticipate saying over again to you everything I'm saying tonight. I do want, I did want you to have those deeds. But on behalf of the Richards, what we are asking the council to do is to support a local business that's been in existence for over fifty years, that employs fifteen to twenty-five people, and whose business depends upon the location that it has been using for the last fifty years. Parking lot is what was a hundred years ago or so, platted as Green Street, but never We are asking that the city recognize the historic use of the property, contrary to what some ancient plats may show but was never built, and to grant the request so that this local business can continue to thrive, offer employment, and provide services to this community.
So, Tom, you would recommend a, the passage of the ordinance, is that correct?
I would highly recommend the passage of the ordinance, and I might add that I did review the final draft of the ordinance. I have reviewed the attached exhibits with regard to the easements, to which we have no objection. There are existing utilities that run through this property that have been there for a long time, and we're not asking that those be disturbed. So we ask and strongly encourage the members of this body to approve this ordinance.
Any questions for Tom? Any other public comment?
We gonna do this again next week?
It'll be April, April twenty-fifth, there will be public comment again, and that's will be when the final vote. That will be the second reading of the ordinance, and that's when the vote will take place. All right? Any other concerns? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. And make sure, please say your name, too, for the record.
Steve Dickerson, the pole barn back there. The alley that runs east and west, it used to run east and west through there. It's like Green Street, it never happened, you know? It was platted a hundred years ago. It never was there, just like Green Street never was there, they didn't develop it. I grew up a block away from there. I used to walk down that alley and saw night crawlers to the bait shop on the corner of that alley, and it's always been open through there. I ran a dump truck service out of there for six, seven years, come in through Green Street and into that, and then back lots there. Given them Green Street, I don't oppose, I don't, I'm not opposed to that, but what I'm opposed to is, is, is the value of the land, you know? What happens to the value of the land back there? You got a path that comes in that is not maintained very well, and no way out. If you pulled a utility truck in there, it's blocked off now, and to set a telephone pole there, they couldn't, you couldn't do it. They'd have to back out, you know? And, and the back driveway crosses the railroad, which Ron Smith owns. I don't have nothing to do with that. So if he sold that land, the railroad off to storage buildings, that driveway wouldn't be there. What does that do to the value of my land, my building? I'll address it next meeting more, but, you know, I just want to point that out. Thank you so much.
Would you like to come and speak? Say something? They can't know, the public can't hear you if you're, unless you're at the microphone, so.
I just bought the house that comes in off the alley on Indianapolis Avenue. If you come in the entrance from Indianapolis Avenue, there is no exit. That is the only entrance and exit to three or four houses, four houses back there. There was an ambulance that came there. They had to block off Indianapolis Avenue because they couldn't get around to the back of there. Where I work at Hendrickson, safety comes first, and if safety doesn't come first, something's wrong. I mean, it doesn't make any difference. My name is Trina Dean, and I did just buy this house, but I just don't understand why there is no other exit. I've never seen anything like that before, ever. I just moved here probably twelve years ago, and everywhere I've ever lived, it has two exits on an alley.
I think you're, I think the Plan Commission has not standing like this either.
Yeah, this is just like somebody using my driveway to come in five houses. It's like, I've never seen anything like that before. So I'm, I'm just concerned with the safety. If a semi would pull in there by accident, he'd never be able to get out.
Semi ain't making that turn.
It would never get out of there.
I think she said it right.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, she did. Thank you, Trina. Is there any other public comment? Again, we'll have more public comment on the twenty-fifth. Any questions from the council? We need to ask of Derek now that we've kind of heard some public comment as well? Concerns from the council? Okay. With that, we're going to move on. Like I said, there will be the second reading of this ordinance at the April twenty-fifth meeting, which will then be when the vote takes place on that, on ordinance twenty-sixteen- dash-zero-two. You guys good over there? You need anything, questions? All right, we're going to move on to, on to the, kind of maybe the positive that's kind of come out of the situation. As Derek could tell you, this has been a very unique case, and it kind of has recognized that there are maybe some, you know, we're dealing with mistakes that have been made a long time ago, that we need to have a way to address them going forward. So I have talked, spoken with some council members, and there seemed to be some interest in forming a group to look at this specifically and how to handle these cases going forward. So, so I know we had talked about with Councilman Campbell, Councilman Robertson, who's also now the new appointment of the Plan Commission, a couple of members of the Planning Commission, Corrin Perry, and then Derek Warren and Rachel Curtis from the, from the Planning Office to kind of work, to figure out what to handle these situations. We know there's, if this has happened, there's probably more out there, right? And unfortunately, this was kind of the first case through the door that's brought this to our attention, that we need to figure out how do we address this going forward. So Derek, if you want to speak on that, what exactly we'll be looking at?
Sure. I can guarantee you there are more like this out there. We have one that will be coming to light here pretty soon, but, you know, the way our vacation ordinance currently is set up is, it's, it's black and white. It doesn't take into account these crazy situations. They're typically for residential vacations when you have an alley on one side or the other of a property, so that they're pretty straightforward. But there are these unique situations, and the fees that we have in place right now may or may not come pretty close to covering like a typical alley vacation, but definitely do not cover what would be a, a street vacation. There's quite a bit of square footage, specifically in this, in this Green Street situation, that the city would definitely lose money in that case. So we need to take a look at that and, and define the process a little bit better, how we go about valuing the land, what, what the review process is, what the application fees are. So I think if we do form a committee, we can definitely tighten up how we deal with these situations.
Is there any thoughts from the council on that? You guys all okay with that idea going forward, hopefully avoid these situations?
Definitely.
Okay. Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
All right, with that, is there any other new business or concerns, or anything come for the council that the council has? Okay? Yes? Oh, okay, go for it, announcement, that'll work.
This morning, I wanted to remind everybody that this Thursday is the sixty-second Annual Quanis Pancake Supper, and from four o'clock till eight o'clock, and it kicks off the Boone County Chamber of Commerce Home Garden Show, and the Quanis Club uses that money to, to support children's programs right here in Lebanon.
Thank you, Mike. Any other announcements, council? Yep, it's, yeah, we're good. All right, with that, we'll move on to the claims. We want to entertain a motion.
I make the motion, we pay the claims.
We have motion to pay the claims. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Claims are approved, and with that, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion adjourned, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.